Welcome everyone to the School District of the City of Dearborn Board of Trustees Meeting for April 10th. First item, please.
Call order. Road call. Hussein Barry here. Fadwa Hamud.
Here.
Mary Lane.
Here.
Trustee Celia Nasser.
Yes.
Yes, and it's the first time I've said trustee. We just closed a very, I would say, bad chapter. We don't need to go back there, but I want to personally thank you for stepping up to serve the district. You've been doing a wonderful job. Very involved. I can go on and on tonight, but I think Dr. Mead would get mad at me, but as a father and grandfather, I feel that we're lucky we have somebody like you on the board. Thank you. Mary Pachikoff?
Here.
James Thorpe?
Here.
President Mead?
Here. Next item?
Next item. Pledge allegiance to the flag. Mr. Shadi Fadhat, Principal McCullough, U.S. School will introduce students who will lead the pledge allegiance.
Good evening Superintendent Malenko and President Mead, and thank you for having us here.
Good.
I am fortunate here to have, you know, three of McCullough's finest students. We have fifth grader Yusuf Bayaz, fourth grader Hussein Mohana, and our fifth grader Naveen Sekhlaoui. And we have a special here, Nada. Get up here, Nada. And they're going to lead us with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Good job. What's your first name? Yusuf. Thank you. Nice job. Hussein? Nice job. Naveen? Hi.
Isn't she beautiful? What a class.
Oh, we have to, oh. How do we get?
I'm going to hand you for now.
Yeah.
For now, and we'll get you.
We'll get you a very nice form.
Nada?
Love you. There you go.
That's better than an old certificate.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item. Superintendent's update. Agenda items.
So just wanted to mention, I was able to get in with the students and the principal and their parents a selfie with the vision sign before, so we might have to make that some kind of a program before the meeting, but always a pleasure to go to McCullough because they love the photos and just getting involved, positive. So thank you to Mr. Farfat Hat and the students. So I just want to start with retirements. Every month we have retirements as we get down closer to the end of the year, school year. You're probably going to see more coming up on the list, and our data does show that we do have a lot of people that are within seven years of retirement, and so it's an area we want to thank our employees for their dedication. So we'll start with Mr. Kurt Doley, eighteen years of service. Billy Gilbert, over sixteen years of service. Kathleen Burr, Kathleen Griffith Burr, over seventeen years of service. We have Helen Kiesel, nineteen years of service. Mark Klein, nineteen years of service. Sheila Niner, twenty-five years of service. Jackie Palmerivay, over fifteen years of service. Karen Picula, twenty-two years of service. So again, we thank them for their time and dedication and their service, and we wish them all the best in their retirement. If we could give them a big round of applause. And that is it for agenda items.
Non-agenda items?
So I have a few things here, and I'm going to be in a second call with Mr. Mashur to come up to the podium, but I just want to talk about the boundary changes that were, yeah, Naveen, you can come up right now. The boundary changes that were passed last month by the board, and I appreciate the leadership of the board taking on this important task for the sake of our students, the long-term stability of the district. So just a kind of update, we've got that infrastructure committee that the board had approved. We are going to be working with a potential consultant to get moving on that. We'll be going to the community. We'll be following a model that was somewhat done back in 2002 during the bond, and we look forward to moving on that. Things like school safety will be included. Other things that are long-term in the district, including potential expansion or infrastructure that may involve, you know, we have the ability because of some of the refinancing we did two years ago with Mr. Wall, to go back for a bond in 2019 with no tax increase. So I just want to keep that on the radar depending on what that committee were to recommend. But the refinancing we did two years ago, some of you might remember jointly with the college, saves the taxpayers money. So just wanted to point that out. So I'm going to ask Mr. Mashur to come up and just mention about the boundary changes. I appreciate the great work he's doing over there.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Just to recap some of what Dr. Malenko already stated, one of the things that we've already done, we sent out the letter to all the families that have children already at either Fortson or Dearborn that want to keep their children who are going into high school in, you know, in the same school, of course. So we already sent out those forms. We've received probably about a dozen of them already. We sent those out right before break to try to get them in the family's hands so that they at least had the opportunity to get that situated, get their lives in order as far as everything went from there. The other thing that we're doing in these letters, some went out today, some, the rest will go out tomorrow, are the letters explaining the entire process, you know, and everything that we did throughout the past year pretty much with regard to the committee meetings, the forums, the community forums that we hosted, what we're doing with some of the classrooms, how we're converting some labs into classrooms and so on, and then who it's going to affect, you know, specifically which populations are going to be affected. And that letter explains that, you know, boundary line changes are never fun for anyone. They're not something that we like to do, but as everybody knows, it's a necessity and something that we needed to do. So we did what we needed to do as far as making those changes, and we're sending those letters out just more for information for people more than anything else. So those letters will go to all three high schools. They'll go to Woodworth Middle School, who obviously was very affected by the changes, Eunice Middle School parents as well, and Smith Middle School. So those are the three middle schools, and then, like I said, all three high schools will receive those letters. Yes?
Are we going to make an effort to get into all of the feeder schools that are being affected, the elementary, middle, and high schools, at some point before the end of the school year for those parents who might just need a personal explanation before them if they don't understand exactly or can follow along with the letter?
Sure. Are you asking, are we going to get the letter, like, sent out individually to all the families? We can do that through the, for the entire district, but what we were going to do was put it on the blog and on some of the, on the school website.
No, that's fine, but can we have a parent meeting at each of the?
Oh, a parent meeting?
At each of the buildings?
Gotcha.
That are going to be affected by this change? So those parents who need to have some questions, they have to, it'd be easier than dribbling in one by one or people waiting until it's too late to be informed?
Yes.
That they, so if we, if we hit them at every level, they'll be more comfortable?
Yeah, I don't have an issue doing that. That's something we can do.
I know we've already done the forums, but now that we've really cemented what is going to be happening moving forward, I think more people are going to be paying attention than maybe were during the community forum portion because they weren't sure what the changes would be?
No, I understand. Of course, we can do that.
Okay.
That's not a problem. You're saying to have one at Woodworth, Eunice?
Henry Ford Elementary.
Oh, the, even the elementary?
Well, even at the elementary because they're the ones who are used to having?
A certain track.
Right.
Correct.
So I would, I would start from the elementary on up that's going to be affected.
That's fine.
Trustee Elaine?
I'd just like to say I did hear some feedback. I was at the animal shelter and I was stopped by some people, and I was told by parents, former parents, just people in the community that they thought the process was handled well, and they were pretty satisfied. They thought it was well-considered process, so I would like to pass on the compliments.
Appreciate it.
And I heard similar things from just community members at large who were following along.
Yeah. Thank you. It's good to hear. Obviously, our team worked very hard on everything that we did, and I know some people at first didn't think it was going to be transparent and open, but that's exactly what we wanted, and we wanted to hear feedback, and we tried to do what we could to accommodate as many people as we could.
Trustee Barry?
You mentioned the word transparency. I heard from a lot of the Smith parents, and this is, they actually feel this is the first time that their voices was heard as parents, so it was a big compliment to the process. Thank you.
And I just want to thank my team again, that our team together, board, superintendent, the administration, the community, everyone who came together, but I can tell you, the eight that were on that committee have spent lots of time and hours and energy in that process that started last May. So thank you for your support of the board and the community and the citizens, and I appreciate that too because I did get similar positive emails that came in from parents as well.
Good job.
So, thank you, Mr. Mashur. So we're through, you know, this is kind of the stretch run, spring break. I hope everyone had a great spring break. We're getting into the stretch run here. March is reading month, very busy time. I'm kind of, even though the weather's been cool, I'm kind of relieved now I don't have to worry about snow days and things like that. We're past, we're into.
I know. I was the same way, man.
I knew you guys would call me out on that one, but there, I'm going to mention heat days, okay? We still got that coming up. I do want to mention that we do have a plan, and we talked about this a little bit several meetings ago back in, like, September. I know Trustee Thorpe, you had talked to me with the PTA. So we do have a plan. We're roughly looking at to at least get those buildings that don't have any air conditioning, some air conditioning, and we're looking at possibly the media center so that we could get some relief. And again, a lot of buildings do have air conditioning, but we are working on a plan for that, so I just wanted to mention, it may not necessarily be implemented fully in a district our size by June, but we do have a plan that we're working on. Mr. Wall and Mr. Grzinski have been working on that, so I just wanted to point that out.
That'll become more important as we're forced to extend the school year.
Yep, correct. So, and so that's going to be an issue. That's maybe an issue the infrastructure committee wants to look at long-term, and I know, Trustee Barry, we were talking about that. So, so we do have, March is reading month. It's one of my, I appreciate the trustees, our community members and staff who have been out there. We put some videos. So we've got a little video we're going to play right now from Mr. Shigfree. It's a fun and busy time of the year in March. Moving along, just wanted to mention our district, it was after the last meeting, but we did also get recognition again by the Mackinac Center, excuse me, as a model district. They did an article, they put in their publication, and they had interviewed us, and so we're very just proud of the things that are going on in our district. Moving along, Administrative Professionals Day is coming up on April 25th, and so we want to, we support and we thank all of our staff. We're going to recognize our staff, and I just wanted to thank all the administrative professionals out there supporting our school district. And then with that, we have the Teacher Choice Awards that'll be coming up on April 26th. And May 7th, the week of May 7th, is Teacher Appreciation Week, and one of the things I like to do, and I've started with administrators, but as I'm going around to buildings for the school improvement visits, I'm handing, I'm getting a list of maybe four or five teachers and handing just thank you cards for their time and dedication in the school district, and so I want to continue with that. It's just the positive morale that we do really appreciate their work. We also have the Impact Awards that are coming up. That's for all staff, non-instructional, so again, just kind of valuing all our staff that are here, and we appreciate their hard work and dedication. Wanted to mention, proud of our students. The week after our last meeting, you know, our students exercised their First Amendment right. We supported them, and again, it was their initiative, and a lot of us have seen this national news and, you know, just that we support our students and their voice and their First Amendment right, and so I appreciate the staff allowing for a safe process on the 14th of March. I actually had my children out there too, just to kind of, we were monitoring, and I know we had a lot of, we had administrators from Central Office in the buildings that day, and then I know the students were exercising their First Amendment rights in other manners, and I think that will continue, so I just wanted to commend them. I know, Trustee Elaine, you sent me a video as well, and so just wanted to kind of mention that. There is a community safety forum that I had sent that's going to go out, that's going to be coming up on April 30th. Debbie Dingell, it's going to be at Fortson, and Debbie Dingell will be there, Chief Haddad and others from the community, just to discuss school safety that LAHC is looking to put on, so. Just a couple more, or actually, one more thing. Wanted to say, we just got back from the National School Board Conference, a few of us and the trustees, and I just wanted to say it was a real positive experience. I appreciated going. We saw the value in team. I want to let the board know that we've already, the full board and those that haven't, weren't there, that we already started working on a draft presentation that we're going to bring, if you approve it for the May meeting, and we want to bring that information, but it's really one of the best conferences that I've attended, one of the largest in just the networking, and part of it was, you know, the learning and networking, and part of it was the company that I had. It was really positive, so just wanted to mention that, and I look forward to. So thank you to the full board for encouraging to do those things or going to the state conference, because the research does show, it's clear, it's important that we do have developments, professional development, and that includes, you know, board trustees and superintendents, so thank you. And that's it.
Okay. Next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements. First item is commendations, and we have, I believe, yes, two seniors from Fortson High School, Muhammad Saad and Rukaya Najdi, will be doing the commendations.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
Superintendent?
You want them to pull the?
... community members?
My name is Rukaya Najdi.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Muhammad Saad, and we are both very proud to represent Fortson High School.
Commendations to three high school seniors who received the 2018 Marge Powell Leadership Award from the AAUW Dearborn Chapter. Reem Abu-Rukba from Fortson High School, Tahani Al-Mujahid from Etzel Ford High, and Celine Nasser from Dearborn High. The honored students were nominated by their teachers and counselors for demonstrating the exemplary qualities of academic excellence, commitment to community, service, and social justice. Each honoree received a scholarship and certificate acknowledging their award. Their names, along with all previous recipients from their schools, are engraved on plaques which are displayed in the hallway of their respective schools to acknowledge the students' accomplishments.
Commendations to Henry Ford Elementary School.
Could you put the microphone right in front of you, please? Thank you.
Commendations to Henry Ford Elementary School Principal Edna Murni, instructional coach Christine Meserol, teacher Suzanne Serini, and Gear Park Elementary Instructional Coach Mary Timp for their efforts to present at the 2018 State Conference of the Michigan Reading Association, "Learning Drives the Future." They did an outstanding job of presenting on instructional coaching. The leadership the team demonstrated through collaboration in this presentation, in this group presentation is a hallmark of the collaborative processes used in successful professional learning communities.
Commendations to Stephanie Hamm, kindergarten teacher at William Ford Elementary School, and Melissa Schick, kindergarten teacher at Salina Elementary, who each won one of three slots in the first annual Educators Fostering Future Readers contests sponsored by the Dearborn Library Foundation. Each teacher won $1,030 and thirty hard copies of the book, "I Went Walking," by Sue Williams. The teachers won the award after submitting applications that explained how they foster reading in the classroom. Congratulations to Ms. Hamm and Ms. Schick on receiving this recognition for the energy and creativity they devote to teaching.
Commendations to the forty students from Dearborn High School, Etzel Ford, and Michael Berry Career Center, who competed in the State Leadership Conference for Business Professionals of America in Grand Rapids. The students spent much time and effort preparing to compete against over 2,100 other students from around the state. In order to qualify to attend the state-level conference, all students competed in a regional event against 600 students in our area. Students who placed in the top two for team events, top three for competitive judged events, and top five in computer events then qualified for the national-level BPA competition that would be held in Dallas, Texas. Congratulations to the following Dearborn High School students who won awards during the state BPA conference. Nassim Abu-Halaweh, second place in extemporaneous speech. William Dobbs. Nassim Abu-Halaweh and Jared Kasran, seventh place in video production team. Anthony Elaziz, first place in Java programming and second place in spreadsheet application. Nadine Bezi, third place in advanced interview skills and sixth place in administrative support research project. Sarah Bezi, second place in presentation management. Zainab Badun, seventh place in economic research. Layal Al-Mukadim, ninth place in advanced interview skills and fifth place in extemporaneous speech. Lilian Faqih, sixth place in interview skills. Maya Hamka, second place in advanced interview skills and first place in extemporaneous Medina Hazimi, fourth place in interview skills. Aslaraan Khan, eleventh place in system administration using Cisco. Mohammed Rida, seventeenth place in spreadsheet application. Layal Jawad, first place in advanced interview skills. Mohammed Darwish, third place in interview skills. Marw Saad, Maya Yahya, and Jana Dabaja, twelfth place in broadcast news production team. Layal Jawad, Ahmed Chabib, Adam Bezi, and Maya Kadu, second place in small business management team. Ali Osman, Mohammed Darwish, Ali Hadous, and Ali Hamendi, second place in economic research team. Commendations to the six students, representatives, who participated in the Future City Competition on behalf of STEM Middle School, hosted by the Engineering Society of Detroit. Mark Strunham, Sarah Murni, and Hassan Al-Jafari were on the Sky City Team, which received the Best Use of Materials Award in the Future City Competition. Maryam Al-Zagir, Selma Al-Wabali, and Brianna Valentine were on the STEM Pyre Future City Team, which won the Specialty Award of Best Engineered Project in the competition. Sixth through eighth grade students imagine, design, and build cities of the future. In addition to designing and creating a scale city model, students compose informative essays, build a model of their virtual city using recycled materials, and present in front of official judges and professionals. Congratulations to the students and their teacher, Jennifer Gleason, and special thanks to Senator Gene Dickerson.
Commendations to the students and staff at Miller Elementary on the outstanding results of their hard work at making the world a better place to live. In this twenty-second consecutive year that the school has participated in Jump Rope for Heart, they raised $1,153 for the American Heart Association. In a separate fundraiser for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, they collected $1,583. Thank you to the many parents who contributed to their success of the students, to the success of the students' fundraising efforts.
Commendations to the seventh grade vocal music students at Lori Middle School on earning first division rating, the highest score possible at the Michigan School Vocal Music Association Choral Festival. The assessment is very rigorous, is a very vigorous rubric. The students are now eligible to attend the state choral festival on April 26th. Special thanks to music teacher Ms. Jefferson Pagowski for her outstanding work with the Lori Vocal Music Students.
Commendations to nine DCMS T students who participated in the 61st Annual Science and Engineering Fair of Metropolitan Detroit on March 14th at COBO Center. More than 2,000 students from the tri-country area and Ann Arbor competed at SEFMD, one of the longest-running and largest science fairs in the world. Commendations to second-place winner, 10th grade student Sam or Sophie for his project titled "The Effect of Calcium Hydroxide and Potassium Hydroxide and Penicillin, Crisogenum." Commendations to third-place winner, 11th grade student Alexander Restom for his project titled "Saving Sea Turtles by Using Environmental Engineering." Congratulations to fourth-placed award winners, 10th graders Ali Dabaja and Hsain Shaitho for their project titled "The Effect of Different Pills on Their Dissolution Rates in Stomach Acid," and 10th grader Hannah Hamoud for her project titled "Mars Biosphere." Congratulations to the fifth-place award winners, 10th grader Anthony Al-Aziz for his project titled "The Microcontroller Approach to a Better Generator," and to 10th graders Maryam Jaratli and Manar Zulfiqad for their project titled "Efficient Hybrid of Solar and Wind Power." Congratulations to the following students who earned the following professional awards at the SEFMD Fair. Hannah Hamoud, certificate from NASA Earth System Science. Alexander Restom, certificate from the American Meteorological Society. Congratulations to the DCMS T participants, and thank you to their advisors for all their hard work.
Commendations to the men and women's ensemble who performed at the MSVMA District Choral Festival on March 13th at Clarenceville High School. The DHS vocalist received a top-one rating, which qualifies them to compete in the state choral festival. This is the sixteenth in a year in a row that DHS has earned the top-one rating at a festival.
And last, but definitely not least, Fortson High School, tractor pride. Commendations to the Fortson girls' basketball team for winning the first district championship since 1999 with a victory over Livonia Stevenson. The team finished 21 to 3 and were the undefeated league champions for the Western Wayne Athletic Conference. Congratulations to the team and coaches, Sal Abazid, Floyd Zaban, and Katie Del Judas for their historical winning season. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Wonderful.
Great job. You know, we're in the middle of the school year when we have that many commendations going on.
Toward the end, right?
Yeah.
Next item, please.
No, Dr. Mead.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'd like to thank someone, and I want to ask other people to join in thanking this man. We got an email, many of us got an email, asking for our remembrances of the work of Brian Wiston at this district or at the state level, and I'd encourage anybody who's interested to write down. He's taken a, I think he's retired from the state board. Dr. Malenko, correct me, has he taken a leave?
It's officially, you're going to be a leave officially.
Okay. All right. Yeah.
Yeah, so for health reasons, but I'd like to personally thank him. He came as a practical person, a man with a big heart and had a great touch, but over the years, we saw him put philosophy into action in this district and at the state level. I was very impressed that he undertook to return Michigan to educational greatness in his top-ten in-ten, which I think we all need to really, really seriously reflect on. Our educational standing as a state is in serious jeopardy. I've read on some of the listservs that we're on, people calling us potentially Mississippi, that we will fall to the bottom of the states if we don't curtail the decline that's happening here in the state of Michigan. And Superintendent Wiston was one person who tried to do that practically and at our district level and at the state level, so I would just like to thank him personally, and I would like anybody else to try to do that also, because he's had a great impact, and his work has just been outstanding, so I want to do that publicly now, and I would ask anyone else to do that privately. The superintendent's office, of course, has the contact info, but it's carefootk@michigan.gov by email. They have a deadline also, April 15th, if people want to write something. They have a deadline also, April 15th, if people want to write something to submit, so.
Thank you very much. Trustee Barry?
Thank you, Trustee Elaine, for giving Mr. Wiston the very due respect. I was going to mention something later on in the agenda. I sat next to a Detroit board member on a flight back last night, was it last night?
Late, late.
Last night, and when she found out that Dr. Malako and I were sitting near her from Dearborn, her and I had a discussion about Mr. Wiston. She was so thankful what he was trying to do for Detroit, and I shared with her that we were blessed in Dearborn to have Brian Wiston service all those years, so thank you for bringing that up, so thank you.
As superintendent. Sorry, since we're on, yeah, if we can keep him in our thoughts and prayers, and as the board is aware, you know, he was my mentor, and, you know, the state of the district is in large part due to his leadership on the board, and so, you know, keep our thoughts and prayers with him, and, you know, for me, I have the utmost respect for him, so thank you for mentioning it, Trustee Elaine.
Trustee Petlock.
And since we're on, I think I'm the only one sitting here who actually hired Mr. Wiston at the time, and when he did his interview, I thought, this is one crazy guy. He had some visions that I thought, we were in 2008, we were in a horrible financial state, and he came in and said he was going to have college for all, and I said, dream on, but the way he sold his vision to us was something that I couldn't resist, and he delivered. He honestly delivered, and he delivered in a very timely fashion, and we have continued to grow those collegiate academies over the years, and they are turning into something quite successful and something we should be proud of. We're unique as a district in not only being a P-14 district, but also in the fact that we have not bartered away our students' education. We have only grown what their opportunities could be, and I hope that the rest of Michigan looks to what Brian started here and understands that those examples are ones that could turn this. His 10 into 10 was not something to be laughed at. Quite frankly, I think if he had had the opportunity to remain in his office, he would have delivered, and it's unfortunate that his health has prevented that, but quite frankly, I think we all owe him a lot of thanks for what he has done for uplifting our community and moving us into one of the top districts in the state.
Thank you.
And then, Dr. Malako, I don't know if it's out of order, but I know you talked to him, and if his health can handle it, if we can do something for him in the community, dinner, some kind of a big thank you.
Sure, we can work.
Please look into that, thank you.
I'd like to, you know, unfortunately, I wasn't there when he served as superintendent, but I've come to learn that truly this district is the way it is. Some of these schools are the way they are because we were able to stand on the shoulders of giants. I've known many. To me, our past superintendent and still superintendent right now of the state, Dr. Wiston, is someone who I admire, and I was personally introduced to him by another giant also, and that was Ahmad Fadlallah. So I was very fortunate to meet two giants, and I truly believe that the district is the way it is because of people like him, and we owe them for years to come, and I know that he's personally mentored you, Glenn, and I think in part it puts us all at ease. You have a great mentor, and so thank you. I hope he gets to watch this.
Yes, Trustee Thorpe?
When Mr. Wiston came to this district, I had a chance to meet him a few times. I'd already been doing some work within the district, and what I saw was camaraderie between the administrators that I hadn't seen before. They were having a lot of fun working together, was my impression. So when it came time to join the board, there was no person other than him that I wanted to have doing the swearing-in. That's how important he's been to me, is in kind of a mentoring role.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Acknowledgements, donations.
Dr. Mosell, thank you. I don't know how to follow all that.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Wiston was also a mentor in mine, and God bless him, and our prayers are with him, and to this day, I still seek his advice, so he's a great man, and is a great man, and he'll continue to be a great man. So, donations, Board President Mead, Board of Education, Dr. Malako. A donation of $3,000 has been offered to Fortson High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for robotics. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to Becker Elementary School by Michigan Fuels to be used for math and science programs and resource development. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to Etzel Ford High School by Michigan Fuels to be used for math and science programs and resource development. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary School by Michigan Fuels to be used for math and science programs and resource development. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to William Ford Elementary School by Michigan Fuels to be used for math and science programs and resource development. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to Lori Elementary School by Michigan Fuels to be used for math and science programs and resource development. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to Maples Elementary School by Michigan Fuels to be used for math and science programs and resource development. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to McDonald Elementary School by Michigan Fuels to be used for math and science programs and resource development. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to Oakman Elementary School by Michigan Fuels to be used for math and science programs and resource development. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to Stout Middle School by Michigan Fuels to be used for math and science programs and resource development. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to Dearborn High School by Michigan Fuels to be used for math and science programs and resource development. A donation of $7,000 has been offered to Fortson High School by Michigan Fuels to be used for math and science programs and resource development. A donation of a 2004 Jaguar has been offered to Etzel Ford High School by Chuck Baughman to be used as an auto shop, for the auto shop for lab exercises, and a donation of $200 has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary School by Rabih Monzer to be used for support of the Robotics Club.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.